Okay, I see the clock turn four. I see that we have a quorum of the city council, city of Hillsborough in the room. So I will call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda today is the consent agenda. We have three items there. We have vouchers totaling one hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven forty-seven, and eighty-three cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers?
Yep.
Next, we have minutes from our April one, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes?
Yep.
Were there any corrections or questions regarding the minutes? And finally, we have change order number three for the CDBG daycare project. Any comments there, Mr. Styles?
No, um, there was a couple of just, they're, they're at the punch stage level of stuff right now, so.
Who's getting punched as well?
Maybe Weens if it doesn't go right.
Okay.
Uh, we did a walk through on Monday, so a lot of this is the paint and, you know, touch up stuff. But, uh, did increase the cost of the project by sixteen thousand eight oh three. And eleven days is probably the more interesting thing, but, uh, they're actually going to be close to substantial completion by the end of the month, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions regarding that change order again? That is simply a pass through for us. Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda submitted.
I'm gonna motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second? Councilman, by seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to our first opportunity for public comment. We do have a member of the public that requested time today. So we're gonna let Mr. Dustin Dahlke come up, and if you would come up to the podium, Dustin, we'd appreciate that.
Okay. A couple images just to pass around so you get some context of. That's all I got. Our request is based on the recent newest gonna have South Wilson New Street. I live on the five hundred block of South Wilson, so, um, I'm here on behalf of the entire west side of the street. So I'll just read what I have written here. As the five hundred block of South Wilson is receiving a new street, I come before the city to protest any proposal of a sidewalk being planned for the west side of said block. The residents of five hundred block of South Wilson, including myself, do not want a sidewalk. Of the eight family households that reside there on the west side, all but one firmly questioned the need for a sidewalk and a protest against one. Uh, just one remaining resident said he didn't care either way. However, to be clear, this resident resides in Wichita and his house on our street is a weekend getaway and summer home. Our block goes to nowhere to the south. The south ends at the five hundred block. It does not go any further except all the way out to the abandoned sewage lift station to a rock road to nowhere. It makes a complete U-turn and back to the north around the block, but there's no current plan of continuing this sidewalk. So it would just end like a Shel Silverstein, Where the Sidewalk Ends book. In being consistent with Hillsborough's new and most recent renovations, those that did not previously have a sidewalk still don't have sidewalks. To be clear, no new street construction that did not have an existing sidewalk did not receive one. I propose that we do the same with ours. For example, the new six hundred block of East First did not receive a sidewalk in its new street construction. The new one hundred block of North and one hundred block of South Wilson Street did not receive a sidewalk in its new construction, both of which connect and lead only one block away from our local elementary school. Even the two hundred and three hundred block of South Kennedy did not receive sidewalks in its brand-new constructions recently. And these streets lead directly to the elementary school's front lawn. In addition, the new concrete construction of three hundred East C Street did not reconstruct, receive sidewalks in its construction, of which from the west to east ties the path from Tabor College to the Hillsborough Menonide Brother Church. Even the new concrete construction street of South Date did not receive any new sidewalks in its recent construction several years ago. If anything, it seems like streets that have sidewalks are near to the downtown area. None of the outer streets in Hillsborough have sidewalks, and we are in the similar standards of being on the street to nowhere. Look at Floral Drive, West A, West Grand, Third Street, Willow Glen Edition, Kirage Hills, and the Northwest Edition out to Sonic and the Hotel. If any place could benefit from a sidewalk, it's Orchard Drive, running out to Dollar General, Sonic, Just Fabrication, Country Heaven Inn, and the local liquor store. People are constantly walking in the street there. In the addition of a sidewalk on five hundred South Block will also shorten the parking availability of each resident by seven feet. Currently, residents can park two full-size vehicles nose to rear in their driveway. By installing a sidewalk seven feet from the street curb, parking this way would be against City, Hillsborough City's code against parking over a sidewalk. Thus causing residents to fill the street with more vehicles, in turn creating more single-lane bottlenecked, uh, bottlenecked in the street, inhibiting the views of drivers, not allowing two-way traffic, et cetera. And let's be honest, only creating a gross view of South Wilson, causing more hindrances for drivers. Is, if that's the goal, then the addition of sidewalks would definitely encourage this. Also, the addition of a sidewalk on the five hundred block of South Wilson would be dangerously close to numerous trees planted in residents' yards. Take a look at any sidewalk in Hillsborough that has a sidewalk close to trees and tell me what most likely happens. Heaving and movement of tree root growth most will likely happen to our sidewalks, as it seems to have happened everywhere else in Hillsborough. How long before sidewalks would be, come unsafe to those with difficulty walking? Sounds like a future trip hazard and a costly repairs to residents are without inevitable. Without doubt inevitable. The addition of the sidewalk in the five hundred block of South Wilson sounds like a nuisance to me, not to mention the string trimming, snow shoveling, and addition to residents in that way. I myself have several French drain that run from low spots to the streets curbed to alleviate basement flooding. The addition of the sidewalk would just complicate that. Others have sprinkler systems and drainage devices similar, and would cause those issues. I realize that sidewalks can be beneficial, but for our block where we don't want them, it just seems unnecessary. I propose to the city of Hillsborough a couple of thoughts. Number one, if the cost of the sidewalks are already part of the plan, then just cut more back, cut more of our driveways back and give us more concrete there. Or better yet, replace some of the sidewalks in Hillsborough that are heaved up and broken already. Or if it has not been allotted for, just save the money and don't give us them. Thirdly, you can just put them on the east side, see if the east side of South Wilson will care. But I think they would protest it too. Please consider not giving us something we don't want, causing more problems, and something that's not necessary. So on behalf of all the residents on the west side of five hundred block of South Wilson, I thank you for listening to our concern. Any questions?
Questions for Dustin? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anybody else, uh, online that would care to address the council at this time? Anybody raising their hand?
No.
Okay. That being the case, we will close the first public comment opportunity and move into our business items. First item for business consideration is consideration of a revised agreement with TCT for security camera service, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So, uh, we did approve this back in February going forward with TCT. But after we met, um, we had a staff meeting and we, we found a couple other locations we thought maybe could utilize, uh, some, some security cameras that weren't included in that. Um, so what we did was we went back and looked at everything in there, and, uh, we actually did end up deleting the rodeo grounds because we didn't feel like that was something that would be, as beneficial for us. Uh, we did add the bowling alley, which would be covered with our grant, um, the K-State one oh five grant, that at least the fixed cost would be. Uh, the water department, electric shop, street shop entry point, they also wanted that. So, uh, what you have is a revision of that, uh, that has those different changes in costs. So the upfront install cost is an increase of about eleven hundred dollars of that. Uh, I mentioned it would, portion of that would go, seven hundred and eighty-five of that would be paid out of that grant. So, uh, the ends up being pretty nominal to increase those spots. Um, and then the, the bill, monthly cost billing would increase fifty, a hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So again, not, not a ton there. So what we're bringing that back to, we also did some minor changes to the, uh, the wording on there so that we could have all the correct things for, uh, cash basis and budget basis laws. Those things needed to be adjusted in that too. Uh, and so you have those adjustments there. And yeah, so what we're recommending is, uh, taking, recommending moving forward with the revised quote from TCT, or TCW, so that we can get the, the project moving forward.
Okay. Questions?
I do. I remember David Edgar mentioning, um, sorry, maybe trying to figure out areas, um, for the dog park that he was thinking about putting in. And I know we mentioned, uh, maybe doing cameras there if we move forward just to, you know, watch over people, make sure that, you know, they're picking up after the dogs and whatnot. Um, is this something where if we do move forward with the dog park, uh, would it be easy to add cameras to it, or is this like a?
Yeah, that'd be pretty easy. They can add on, uh, the biggest thing is connecting the internet connections to it. But the, out there, it's pretty simple, um, with, especially with the new community-wide Wi-Fi. I don't think we'll have any issues making an adjustment to it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, we have a recommendation before us to, uh, to amend the contract or adjust the contract, um, which will increase the amount of the initial expense and the monthly, uh, the monthly cost as, as outlined. Would somebody care to move that, uh, move that we move forward on that basis?
I'm gonna motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Councilman Wilkins, seconds. Any further discussion?
How soon would they be able to install everything?
Uh, they're ready to get going. They've ordered some of the stuff already based on our initial, uh, initial approval. But I think it'd probably be May, sometime in May.
Any additional comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have consideration to set a special meeting on April twenty-one, twenty twenty-five for the purpose of strategic planning, which we have now changed.
It's gonna have to be a different day.
Colin is not available there. So, Mr. Styles, I think you have some additional.
Yeah, we had a couple of additional dates and I sent those around to you guys ahead of time. Uh, May twenty-second, Thursday, May twenty-second seems to be the date that, that I've heard the most about. Um, I don't know if that's something that would be acceptable to everybody, but, um, May twenty-second would be an option. Little further out than I was hoping to go, but this season of the year is difficult.
Sounds good. Too many calendars.
It looks.
Give me a calendar.
You gotta do something.
How to get the right one.
After school is over, so that's a good.
We have, at two P M., we have high school track regionals.
Okay.
That day. The twenty-second.
The twenty-second. Well, other options. Twenty-first, the day before, was a Wednesday.
That's an option. That's open. And most churches have ended their Wednesday night services for the summer, I believe, at, by that point.
May twenty-first.
May twenty-first.
For me.
Okay. Well, we could also, uh, if we can't find a date right now, um, we could table that and then come back and visit it again. Obviously, it's in May, so we'll have a couple of meetings before and after that. And I can send those dates back around and we can see, get some more feedback on that.
Well, you've only got one actual meeting prior to.
We'll have the, the six. This is like, well, we're meeting already, so we don't wanna do that, but, uh, later in the month, we have the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth, which is that last week.
And that's open, wide open for me.
Let me know. Yeah, I just have to request offer no call, so.
Okay.
Are we talking about May?
Yeah, into May, last week of May.
Yeah, twenty-seventh or twenty-ninth. Works. But not, what is twenty-seventh, so.
Tuesday.
I can do that.
Tuesday after Memorial Day. So May twenty-seven?
I don't have everything down on my schedule.
Okay.
May twenty-sixth?
So May twenty-seven. And I assume you wanna do it at like six, so we can have seven?
Six thirty would be.
Six thirty for, for dinner? You wanna have dinner too? Blake's down for dinner?
I'm always down.
Okay, well, surprise us with what you're gonna bring.
Hey, I'm already bringing treats on the sixth.
For your birthday?
Yep.
All right, well, if you were gonna do May twenty-seventh on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh at six thirty, we would need a motion and an action to set that as a special meeting.
Um, I would like to make a motion to set the next date of the strategic planning for Hillsborough to be May twenty-seventh at six thirty P M.
Oh, wait. Oh, I'll second it, sorry.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will set a special meeting for that date and time. Okay. Next up, we have, um, an executive session. And does somebody have that, uh, okay?
I move that the city council recess into executive session for the purpose of preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property pursuant to K S A seven-five dash forty-three nineteen B six for a period of fifteen minutes. The executive session will include the city administrator and city attorney. The open meeting will resume.
Four thirty-one.
Four thirty-one.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now in executive session.
Oh.
That's what you're gonna have when I talk to Jesse.
Yeah. I got a funny story to tell you about him.
Okay. Um, the meeting is now back in open session. Let the record show that no action was taken during the executive session. And that's brings us towards the end portion of our, of our meeting, and we've got Matt, your city administrator's report.
Sir, thank you. Uh, try to keep it relatively quick. If I can get it pulled up, okay. Uh, grants, uh, we've had a lot of kind of grant things happening. So, uh, we're happy to announce that we did receive that board, uh, deed board grant that we had applied for through A P P A. That's the one that I, uh, I wrote for and had, had Cali kinda screaming a little bit, uh, but we got it. We ended up getting it, so twenty-nine thousand, seven, eight, a hundred and eighty-two dollars. Um, so what that's gonna let us do is build a, um, we're gonna work with K P P Energy and build a, an app for the community and then like an online training academy for, um, videos, uh, for public power and, and utilities. And so it's like an educational content that we're gonna build. Uh, and then hopefully K P P Energy can use that for other communities. I know that they have with this solar project, they have an obligation to do some education things. And so, uh, we're looking forward to kind of partnering with them, and I got Leslie already going on some stuff. So, uh, we're excited about that, so we're gonna get twenty-nine thousand bucks to, to build this community app and this, uh, online academy thing, and it's gonna be really good. I think it'll be really fun, uh, project. Cali's, Cali's looking forward to it, actually, so. Um, and then pay, uh, the Department of Commerce grant, we got moved into the final review stage for a new mural project. So, uh, they provide up to ten thou, well, ten thousand dollars for Brick Mob. That's the people who did our greetings from Hillsborough, um, mural, to come in and do one on the south side of the bowling alley. Um, and so we would have matching funds from the C V B, which paid for it before. And then maybe, uh, the, the community foundation has a category specifically for public art that we may be able to tap into too. And then we've got some staff time tied into it. So, uh, we're hopefully, you know, as you move into that process, that, that bodes well, um, to moving into the next piece for that and maybe getting funding. Uh, the Patterson Family Foundation, so if you'll remember, last time I told you, we applied for a similar grant from them, uh, a letter of intent from them to do this community-based app. Now that we have that, I'm hoping that maybe we can flip that around and do some of our other stuff, uh, specifically some downtown entrepreneurial things that really fits into what they fund. So hoping to get that. And we're also actively working on a hometown, T-Mobile hometown grant for the Community Plaza Amphitheater Project. So that'd be fifty thousand for that. I think we can get it done for that. So, uh, with the matching money that we have already kind of aside. So, uh, a lot of good stuff happening in the grant side. We're doing really well with that. Uh, I got a couple more that I know Cali's got waiting here back on, so, um, we're staying active with that. That's, that's where we're at. Uh, township fire meeting, we had our annual township fire meeting. We only had Lehigh Township show up. Uh, that is not atypical. Uh, we don't have good, uh, participation. Um, but they've expressed an interest in renegotiating their service contract. Um, they're right on the, part of their district actually, or their township is in Lehigh. And so they're interested in maybe establishing a relationship with the Lehigh Fire Department, who exited our deal last year, uh, and maybe doing some kind of split to where some of that money, uh, specifically for equipment would go to Lehigh. We just advise them, you know, if that's how you feel, as you should definitely talk to your township because you guys are three people, um, and see kind of what that looks like and how that is. So we're gonna follow them and provide some, get some feedback and see what that is, but they may be wanting to come and visit that. They won't be able to change anything this year. We're set for this year, but, um, next year potentially they could renegotiate that, so. Uh, the quarterly report for C CAC is attached there. You can kind of see what they're doing with all of those things. They have the youth entrepreneurship challenge, several trainings and lectures. Uh, the business climate survey is out there and active now, and I put a link in there. If you know anybody who wants to take that, you can, they can go out and take that. Uh, I think we're up to fifteen or twenty responses right now. I'm not sure. I don't think it's quite twenty. Um, so we sent that out and we've got several responses back on that. Uh, some kind of the quick stuff here, the Bartle House project, we're accepting the bids for the foundation work. We'll have those bids back on the twenty-second. Uh, coffee with the mayor, Domenzi, from the C CAC, and Gracie Kidd, who's one of the Tabor entrepreneurship students, um, and a business owner, is gonna be on our podcasts Wednesday, so that's gonna be fun. Uh, Tabor Day groundbreaking, they're gonna be kind of talking about the C CAC. They've got that building project and they wanna do a groundbreaking ceremony there on Tabor Day, April thirtieth at four thirty. You're all welcome to attend that. It's a public event. Uh, rekeying projects moving along, uh, city hall is finished, and then they're moving out to the rec stuff. I'm not sure where Ed's at on that, but there's a lot of doors in the rec. Um, but that, the overall, it's gone really smooth. We've had a lot of really positive feedback from the staff, uh, all of our staff, because I, I went from, I went from having a giant keychain to one key, uh, which is awesome. Uh, and that, well, one key that opens most of the doors, so, uh, as we kind of move forward, we'll have more of that. Um, I also just got our K P P bill. This is actually the earliest our second meeting can be in a month. And so we just got it this afternoon. Um, looks like we had a, a negative cost adjustment, so we, we saved about, uh, eighty, almost eighty-eight hundred dollars on that. Uh, the bill, total bill was a hundred thousand, just over a hundred thousand. So, um, I'm guessing that that looks pretty similar to what it was last year. We probably have sold a little bit more energy, um, as we did on previous month. Um, yeah, and so that's, that is all the updates I have for you. And if, if you wanna talk about Wilson Street, we can approach that. I know Mr. Dahlke's left, but, um, what we, what we did with the initial design with Wilson Street was to include a sidewalk. Uh, it's in our subdivision regulations that we put sidewalks in in new developments. Uh, we're definitely not glued to the sidewalk. If the, if the residents don't want it, don't put it in. Uh, it's just a cost, it's factored into the cost, and we can just save that money and, and maybe do some additional improvements up like cells.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I don't think that there's any, there's no particular reason other than that's in our subdivision regulations.
Uh, are we gonna have, since it's in our regulation, is there anything that says that we can orgow that? Or do we have to make a motion to do that, or?
No, so the subdivision regulation applies to new subdivisions, so like Orchard Ridge, for example.
Okay.
Those have sidewalks in it.
Okay.
Uh, because it's required on one side of the street.
Okay.
This is an existing sidewalk in existing, or an existing neighborhood with no sidewalks, so.
Okay.
You have a lot more freedom there.
Okay.
We just kind of extended that into, uh, places where roadwork is done?
Yeah.
Is that a kind of a?
Kind of how it is, yeah.
Sort of.
Yes and no. Sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't, but in this case it did. Um, and we also, because we have Lincoln Street, we're doing the design at the same time, there's two sidewalks on Lincoln Street. Uh, and so that needs to be adjusted there too, and so I assume Darren just kind of put it in there. This is our normal practice, so, uh, if you don't want them in there, we don't have to put them in there, and that's what I told Dustin. Like, you know, I'm not, we're not gonna go to war over a sidewalk, uh, in an existing neighborhood. There's no point. And there's a lot of perfectly good reasons why you wouldn't want it. Uh, he brought a lot of them up, so.
And there's not currently a sidewalk on the other side of the street, so it'd be completely.
Yeah, like a lot of our residential neighborhoods.
Better the different problems there would be for homeowners to all of a sudden lay sidewalk on their property. So he, he laid out a pretty good case.
So if you look at Adam Street, you know, there's the, uh, uh, walking school bus sidewalks that go through there, but on the, uh, east side, no sidewalks. And, you know, and he's not, uh, wrong on, on, uh, on Wilson and Kennedy.
Right.
You know, we didn't put sidewalks in there either. What we did do in those cases was we took the, uh, sloped asphalt curbing and replaced it with concrete curb and gutter, which is, you know, bringing it up to, up to a little higher standard and, and, uh, does make it a little easier from, uh, from a parking standpoint and, and also than walking along the street too, for sure. So, yeah, um, I don't know that it requires any, a vote, but it does, you know, is, if, if that's the direction the council gives to Matt, then that's the way it will go.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
So is that the direction?
Yep.
Anybody opposed to that direction?
We're in the middle of design, so that is an easy fix.
Yeah. Nice.
Very good.
Now, how does a citizen like that find out? Like, how did, how did he find out the plans of that in order to communicate to his neighbors?
So, uh, they were out there, uh, of course. Dustin is Dale's brother, who's the street superintendent.
Oh, okay.
So that's kind of how, they were out there walking the street and with the engineer and looking at it, and they asked the question, well, is there a sidewalk? And one thing was, no.
Okay. Enough said.
Yep. And then we will have another community meeting, like, we had, uh, citizen meetings for Lincoln and Wilson previously. And so as they get that design done, we'll have another one and they'll have another opportunity, yeah, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they, they would know in advance that they were gonna add a sidewalk, either talking to the people putting it in or like that meeting, 'cause I went to that from Lincoln Street, so, yeah, you get told in advance.
Okay, well, this would probably be another, another discussion or a different discussion, but I, I'd be in favor of considering using those funds that would be, have been used for that to look at very dangerous sidewalk situations throughout the community and doing something.
There are several. There are several that need to be. Yeah, there's a, we don't have a, I don't know that we have a real active inventory of all those problem areas, but I imagine we could do that relatively quickly.
Be in favor of that too. I think that's a good idea. I'm a sidewalk for kind of bad.
Matt, if you identify different places for that, let us know, because we've got to keep them to the, we gotta keep them to the main traffic ways that we authorize. That doesn't mean that we can't do some things, but we need to know in advance rather than just spend the money somewhere else. But we work through it.
Any questions there on that? Are we comfortable with that? So you have your, your direction? And, um, you'll let Mr. Dahlke know?
Yeah, I'll follow up with that.
Okay. You know, it's, it's, uh, it's, uh, always a little bit interesting to me because we all know that a lot of things are driven by self-interest. But, uh, one of the comments he made, you know, well, there should be a sidewalk up on Orchard Drive, and, you know, we all know that we want a grant to pay for that, and so there is one going in there. And it'll be actually a little bit more than a sidewalk. It'll be a high bike trail. So it'll be eight foot wide and concrete and, you know, very, very nice, so, you know, that's the good news. So places that we, according to Mr. Dahlke, need sidewalks, we were, we are doing it. We are doing it, so that's good. Okay. All right, that takes us to our final opportunity for public comment. I don't see anyone in the room, anyone online, Mr. Styles?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we will close the final public comment opportunity and move to council comments. Councilman Jorgensen, we'll start with you this evening.
Yeah, um, I'd like to, uh, thank the city for their encouragement to attend the city leaders academy. We, um, speaking for myself, but heard great comments on the academy in Lawrence last week and I learned a lot and made some good connections and starting to learn more about what this is all about. So it was, it was a helpful time, yeah.
Very good. Councilman Wilkins?
I have a couple of comments. Um, the first one, I'd have to echo what Jeff said. It was a very good meeting. I enjoyed it a lot. And I have a couple of things from some constituents. The, the first one has to do with the the city cleanup. People are a little upset about that with the new changes, so I just need some clarification so that I understand it better. And so I can tell them sort of what's going on. So I guess with the new bundling, does it just, I guess, what, what are the parameters for how it has to be bundled together? Like, is it rope or can, I mean, yeah, I mean, just.
Actually, I think it's always been that that regulation didn't change it really.
Well, I think there was some confusion because, uh, they were talking about like all their stuff that they want picked up has to be bundled. But is it all the things that are being picked up has to be bundled or just specific items that need to be bundled?
Got here, um, I think they're, I mean, they're talking about specific things like leaves and well, not leaves, but like.
Okay, so it's branches, okay, because I think the impression was everything.
No, we like to bundle it all. What that means is that it's some sort of contained way to do that, not just scattered out everywhere.
So.
We give a lot of that, and so it it's just to facilitate it going more quickly and safely for people.
So it's, if they can just have it in a designated pile, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, it has to be, we gotta be able to pick it up.
Yeah, okay.
So you don't have to tie ropes around it?
No, no, you don't have to, you don't have to.
Yeah, because that that was some confusion and.
Sticks you do, we want the.
And then I guess pricing for big items, like I guess some things, I guess mattresses came up.
Yeah, mattresses is a new one, because we get charged for that now. Um, we get charged at the, um, transfer station for those. So we're passing that charge back.
So I guess any new charges is just transfer station that we're passing.
Yeah, we're getting charged by the transfer station. Tires, that that cost went up. Um, but those are, those are just costs that we're passing back real. Yeah. And we ask people to prepay those. Um, appliances are free. We usually, we actually have somebody who will typically go out ahead of time and pick that stuff up. Um, but if we do pick it up, we just need to know. Um, we schedule all that stuff.
Um, how much do they hire notice what they need?
That's a good question. I don't know what the actual, I don't know if there's like a hard, fast deadline listed on here, but you know, if we, we could get it this week. It's cleanup is next week, right? To the twenty-first to the twenty-third. So it's on your scheduled trash day. We'll come to your area. Uh, if we had it, you know, this week by Friday, that would be great. Um, I think, oh, we're closed on Friday because it's Thursday. Thursday would be ideal. Um, people will still do it. I mean, if it's ahead of time, we usually.
Day, if it's their their Monday day, they had it to us by Thursday, you know, on Tuesday by Monday. If we have as much as possible this week, if they needed to add it, it has to be before their pickup day. That must happen.
Yep. It may not get picked up if it isn't.
And what happens then is we have a, um, just FYI, we have a bulky item pickup the last Friday of every month, which will be on the twenty-fifth. And so if there are things out, um, then we do charge ten dollars per item on bulky item days. For clarification on that, this is for mattresses and tires. There's a charge. But any other month, we do have a bulky item pickup and that's ten dollars per item on those Fridays.
Another important thing is it's residential only. It's not commercial. And, uh, we don't allow landlords to like clean out apartments. Just throw stuff out here. That happens a lot too. Um, so it needs to be your stuff and not, you know, I have an apartment complex, I'm gonna clean it all out. I understand that that doesn't always happen, but we're trying to keep it as reasonable and organized as possible.
It's a good thing I don't have any rental properties.
Right, there you go.
No police cam will pick me up with my big cigar trying to drop off things at the.
Pull it all out.
You don't have to have them call Matt and tell them they don't know who I am. That was classic.
I haven't had a Brandon Muffel call in a while. That's pretty good.
Please don't squeeze the charman, pal.
And then my, my next, uh, uh, I guess just so people are aware, I guess on North Lincoln, people are noticing I guess some shady activity at night. Um, I don't know how to go about it, but just um, telling what I've heard, which is, I guess, um, one person said that had to get cameras because twice around four A M, I heard someone opened their front door and tried the inner handle. And then another person, I guess, has commented, uh, seeing someone out back. I, I don't, yeah, I'm just, yeah.
Pass it on.
You are, you are encouraging them to call nine-one-one, right?
Uh, I mean, I haven't spoken to anyone. I mean, this is just
Sure.
Third-hand information, but I will recommend, please call nine-one-one if you
Yeah, that's.
are noticing anything.
I mean, those sound like potential safety issues and, boy, people sure, sure do that.
Yeah, so.
We'll be there, yeah. I'll pass that on to P D, so we can, uh, up patrol around the area.
Yeah, um, believe, believe it was in the alley, yeah, on North Lincoln, I believe. That is it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, that's good.
No more.
No, but that's, that's what, no, that's what this is for, so thank you for, uh, for bringing that up. Councilman McCarty?
Nothing.
Nothing today?
No.
Okay, Councilman By?
Um, I just had a great time with you guys at the City Leaders Academy. Um, I did have a question in for the fire station.
Okay.
What is the next step? I had somebody ask me.
Yeah, uh, we are working with our friends over at the USDA on financing part. So that has been a tedious process. And that's kind of where it's at. So they're reviewing all the documents. I sent them a huge tranche of documents um, that they're required, and that's where it's at right now.
Okay, so we'll just wait long.
Yep, wait and get a response from them and then, you know, get the funding in place and then we get. Because, because we're looking at USDA, there's some things with bidding and things we have to make sure that happen. So we have to get the approval letter from them before we can move forward.
That's all you know. That's all you got.
Okay, um, I did share this with Matt earlier, but I also was approached by by a constituent wondering when we were gonna get some additional waste receptacles on the hospital trail. Uh, they said, uh, you know, they, uh, when they took their, uh, their dog out there, they did, uh, keep their bags and bag up the waste, but they said, you know, it was a long ways to, uh, to a place to get rid of it, so. And I know we had talked about doing that. We have plans for that, but, you know, hopefully we'll be getting on that soon.
Well, since you brought that up, some people would still like a bench out there.
Yeah, we're actually working on that too.
Oh, you are, okay.
We've got a.
It was benches and benches and
Shade is one that we.
And trash.
Yeah, shade and trash. Got a couple of things in the works on that.
I can understand why people don't want to carry around a bag of dog droppings.
Depending how big your dog is, it can be a lot.
That's true.
You have a Great Dane that you're walking.
Okay.
People walk horses up there.
Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.